Welcome those who are joining us in the audience. We see a lot of new faces in the audience. Good to see you. FCYC is that? Fayetteville County Youth Council? All right. Good to see you. Also, those who have joined us remotely, we thank you for doing so. At this time, we will begin with the invocation. We'll ask Assistant Pastor Deborah Kinzer from the First Pentecostal Power Fellowship Church if she would. Good evening, Pastor. How are you?
Good evening.
If all could please stand for the prayer, immediately following the prayer if we could repeat the Pledge of Allegiance.
If you could bow your heads, please. Heavenly Father, we come before you tonight in the mighty name of Jesus. We thank you, Father, for your hand upon this great city of Fayetteville, North Carolina, a city of purpose, praise, and destiny. Father, we invite your Holy Spirit to come into this council chamber tonight as Matthew 18:20 states, "For where two or more gather together in my name, I am in the midst." We declare and decree that your wisdom flow through every council member. For every decision and every word spoken, let the spirit of unity and righteousness reign over this meeting. Heavenly Father, we declare that Fayetteville belongs to you. We speak life over the city of Fayetteville. We decree blessings over the leaders, our neighborhoods, our schools, and the families. Let this be the city where your love flows through and is shown through our services, where we hope it is restored, and where justice rolls down like water. Heavenly Father, we fill this chamber with your presence. Silence. Confusion, excuse me. Bring clarity and gratitude through every heart by guiding it with your Holy Spirit. We thank you, Heavenly Father, in ordinance of divine direction for the blessed and faithful work that is bestowed upon the city of Fayetteville, City Council, Fayetteville Police Department, Cumberland County Sheriff's Department, and the Departments of Social Services, Board of Education, and every county public service department you have touched through these leaders. As we close our prayer, Heavenly Father, we thank you again, and it is done as we decree in the mighty name of Jesus, the name of the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Amen. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Kinzer. If you want to tell us a little bit about yourself or your ministry that you're affiliated with, we'd love to hear about it.
Sure. My name is Pastor Deborah Kinzer. I am an assistant pastor for First Pentecostal Power Fellowship and Worldwide Ministries. The presiding pastors over it is Apostle Frederick Nwasso and Apostle Grace Fred Nwasso. Our headquarters is located in Raleigh, North Carolina. We do have a church here off of MacArthur Street. We are building the church back because it had fell apart for a minute there, but you know, that was due to the 2020 recession thing that we had going on for COVID.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
You know, so we're trying to build that back up. We also have some ministries going on called Global Peace Missions, and that is helping people to build their lives again around the world. Okay? We have also headed by Evangelist Linda Branch Cora's Closet, okay? She is a part of the ministry. She is one of our evangelists and everything. We have Pastor Jerry. He's doing a lot of different works with the motorcycle clubs. I forgot what he called the ministry, but he's doing those works. And I, of course, head Kingdom SOS.
Well, thank you. It sounds like you all are doing great work in the community. Let's give Pastor Kinzer a round of applause. Thank you for joining us. I know Ms. Linda well and many members of that, so keep up the good work. Congratulations on rebuilding, and we know you'll continue to do great things. Thank you for coming to join us and pray for us tonight. Counsel, at this time, we have a special recognition. I'll turn that over to Councilmember Thompson. He'll lead that, and I think Mr. Brooke Redding took care of that from the Parks and Rec or staff perspective. So, Mr. Brooke and Councilmember Thompson.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. It was our initiative when we did the youth curfew ordinance for us to incorporate a junior mayor into the city of Fayetteville. This is one program that I thought would be pertinent for us to be able to communicate with our youth to find out what their needs and desires are. And that presentation is going to be done today on who our staff has appointed. Mr. Brooke will come and give us a small briefing and introduce our new junior mayor.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, sorry to walk in a second there. So, I'm Brooke Redding, a senior assistant to the city manager in the city manager's office. So, I don't see them here, but back in May, we were given instruction to establish a junior mayor program in the FCYC, and Ms. Tashika Smith from Parks and Rec helped lead that way with Mike Gibson and his team, and they have redone, go ahead, come on up, and implemented this so that the chair formally is now the junior mayor. Go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Yes, so, good evening, Mayor and Council. First, I want to thank God for this opportunity and for guiding me on this journey. I'm truly honored to be standing here today as the newly inducted junior mayor of the city of Fayetteville. To my family and friends and mentors, thank you for believing in me, supporting me, and pushing me to keep growing as a leader. I especially wanted to recognize my family who's here tonight. It's kind of crowded, but I saw my family back there.
Stand up, stand up, family. Stand up, family.
Yeah, that's my family. It's much bigger, but that's my family. Your love and encouragement means the world to me. To my family, Fayetteville County Youth Council family, thank you for being such a huge part of my leadership journey. You all inspire me every day with your passion, dedication, and creativity. At this time, I'd like to recognize some of my executive board and other members of the council here. So, this first three rows right here, this all FCYC right here, if you guys can stand up.
Stand up, FCYC, all right.
Yes. We just had our second meeting of the year last Monday, and they're doing phenomenal already. I'm so excited. The next time I report out to City Council, I'm gonna share you the projects that they have been working on. So, great job, everybody.
Good job.
Yes. As junior mayor, I'm excited to announce, oh, I'm excited to continue the work for Fayetteville to listen, to serve, to make sure your voices are heard. Thank you all for, again, for trusting me with this role. I'm grateful, I'm motivated, and I'm ready to continue the work for Fayetteville.
All right. Well, thank you. We are glad to welcome you, Madam Mayor. So, thank you for that, and we look forward to great things that you all have done. Councilmember Thompson, I didn't mean to steal the mic. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like to add, for those who attended the Way Too Real Symposium that they had, this was the young individual who was on the stage giving us their feedback.
Ah, I heard that.
On what our youth are looking for in the city of Fayetteville, to make us the all-American and candidate city we are. So, give it up for these youth who are doing great things in the city of Fayetteville.
Oh, yeah. Come on back here, Madam Mayor. you, FCYC, Fayetteville County Youth Council, continue, continue doing in our community. Our future is bright, so we thank you. I'm encouraged, Madam Mayor. So, when I need to call out, sick, I'll call you. So, be around and take it on. But thank you for that. Thank you for joining us, family. It's because of family that we're able to do that, and it certainly is a product of your work and your investment. So, thank you for what you've contributed to our city as well. Counsel, with that, we'll move from there to the announcement section. I didn't see any.
We've got an announcement, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Benevente.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to let everyone know that this coming Saturday, November the 1st, 2025, at 10:00 a.m. in downtown Fayetteville, the Cumberland County Veterans Council proudly invites the community to come together in celebration of our nation's heroes at the 2025 Veterans Day Parade, once again, happening this Saturday, November 1st, at 10:00 a.m. in downtown Fayetteville. This year's theme is "Vets Giving a Hand to Vets," highlights the spirit of unity, service, and gratitude that defines our military community.
Thank you, sir. All right. Counsel, with that, we'll move to, we have our city manager, Assistant City Manager, Ms. Kelly Strickland. Madam.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm honored to be filling in for Dr. Hewitt tonight, and just have one item for the manager's report. I'd like to invite up to the podium, please, Mr. Willie Henry, Mr. Marcus Townsend, Mr. John Wesley, Mr. Uwet Johannes, Mr. Adam Faulkner, and Mr. Kenneth Maynor.
Y'all in trouble, fellas?
They come bearing gifts, huh?
Absolutely, they do. So, the city of Fayetteville has earned double recognition from the National Association of Government Web Professionals. Our team was awarded with both the Pinnacle Award and the Members' Choice Award in the City-County Medium Population Group category, which is comprised of populations from 50,001 to 225,000. The city's website impressed judges with its excellence in content, organization, design, performance, and accessibility, while also resonating with the NAGW members who selected it as their top choice. This dual honor reflects Fayetteville's commitment to creating an exceptional digital experience that serves its community while setting a high standard for government web design. And again, this was a national award.
Oh, congratulations, IT team.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important to point out that it's not just IT or the team you have here. We have a, there's a large IT team behind IT. There's a large MarCom team behind them. And then, we also have content managers in all the departments. It was all of our work coming together that was able to make this award possible.
Well, we thank you for the work that you're doing for the city. You know, what you do is invaluable, behind the scenes and out front. So, we thank you for that because the city couldn't run without its technologies. So, thank you for that. Congratulations.
Just go run. Get a quick photo.
Y'all coming by? Yeah.
All right.
All right, now. Congratulations.
Now, before we take this picture, the gentleman that's in the middle, you can slide to your left or right. Maybe that side.
That's good. That's good. That's good.
That's good. Well.
All right. Congratulations, guys.
I was trying to get you in there, but you got blocked there.
All right.
That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, yeah. Manager Strickland, we appreciate it. Counsel, moving to item 6.0, the approval of the agenda. We'll look for a motion to approve. And Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin, is she on? All right. Good evening, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin.
Yes, good evening.
All right. So, is the motion, Councilmember here?
No, 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 no. I need to move an agenda items.
Okay. All right. I'm sorry.
I'd like to move 9.0 agenda items to be placed before 8.0 agenda items.
All right. So, the nine-point section, which are the public hearing items, will come immediately following consent in your motion, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, is motion to approve with following changes as mentioned. Second about Councilmember here, any discussion? All right, counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin. Who else are we missing? Oh, all right. Motion carries. All right, counsel, moving to the items that were, that we'll look for consent, entertain a motion for consent. Councilmember Thompson.
Move that we approve the consent agenda, Mr. Mayor.
All right. It's moved by Councilmember Thompson to approve. Second about Councilmember here, it looks like.
Yes, sir.
All right. Discussion on that motion.
I have discussion, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Benevente.
This may be for the city attorney or maybe the city manager. There was a vote taken upstairs to move the work session that was scheduled for November 3rd to November 10th. Is that considered to be a part of this consent agenda? Because I want to make sure I don't give tacit approval to what I felt like was an improper motion.
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Counsel, I'll look to you for your votes. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Green.
All right. Motion carries. All right, counsel, moving to the public hearing items. All right. It's time for public hearing. We are preparing to hold the public hearing where the city council formally seeks your input. Individuals designed to speak in the hearing must have signed up to speak with the city clerk by name and address before the start of tonight's meeting. We will begin with a staff presentation and then move into the formal hearing. Fifteen minutes will be allowed for those in favor and those opposed of the item. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each unless by previous arrangement a single spokesperson has been designated, in which case the spokesperson may use the entire 15 minutes. When the city clerk calls your name, please come to the podium. Please clearly state your name and address for the record, and may then begin to address the council. When the light changes from green to amber, I need you to have 30 seconds remaining, and then at the conclusion of that time, your time will have been allotted, and the timer will ring or the light will turn red. So, with that, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Harmon. So, Councilmember Davis, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, per the applicant, they were asking for this to be tabled, so I will move that we table this.
Which item?
9.01 for the resigning for the Rose Hill Row.
All right. And so, did you have any more clarity on that? Mr. Harmon, what's behind this?
According to the email that the clerk's office got, the owner of this property is out of country due to an emergency situation.
Okay. All right. So, this is a motion to table. Is it a date, sir?
Yes, sir. I'll move that we table this until January the 16th. I mean, January 26th, I'm sorry. 2026.
So, January?
26, 2026.
Okay. January 26th, day of 2026. Okay. All right. Counsel, is there a second to that? Second about Councilmember Hondros. Any discussion?
Yes.
All right. Councilmember Benevente.
Well, I guess maybe this will be still the question phase, Mr. Mayor, but I don't know if there was some clarity on how many times a request has been made by the applicant to sort of move the goalpost on this discussion? This is not the first time, is it?
It's not. This was, so this is an appeal. It was appealed to your meeting in August. In August, they asked that this be tabled until this meeting.
Why was that? Do you remember the reason for that?
At that point, they had the representative that was coming that night had a medical condition.
So, there's been medical emergencies every time? Alleged, a medical emergency?
That's what we've been told. That's.
Now, do you have any record of how many people came to speak at these previous occasions?
I believe, Ms. Clerk, you have.
Yes, sir. So, at the August 25th meeting, there were six speakers in opposition and one speaker in favor. And we have the same, well, we have six speakers in opposition tonight and two speakers in favor.
Well, Mr. Mayor, if there's no other questions, I guess I'll still reserve an opportunity to comment on this motion before the vote unless there are other questions.
Yeah, this is the question phase. We've got a motion and a second, so.
Okay. Well, if there's no other questions for anyone else?
We're about to take the vote after the question phase.
Very good, sir. In that case, I'll just take this opportunity to say that, you know, we've had citizens who've been very diligent about organizing around this issue. It is no small feat and no small task for folks to come in to City Hall in the way that they have, and now this is the second time that they've organized and arrived here. And it seems like if the shoe was on the other foot, we would not be tabling this if they were not available, and the applicant was indeed available. So, you know, at a certain point, in my line of work, a judge will tell the attorneys, "You've had enough continuances. It's time to try your matter." In this case, all of us here on the dais are serving as those decision makers. I think today will be the day to say, "You've had enough continuances. Everyone here is ready to speak and take this matter to the next step, and if they're not prepared to do that, then they need to withdraw their application." So, for that reason, I'm voting against this, and I hope that a majority of the colleagues will stand with the people here.
Thank you, Councilmember. All right. Counsel, seeing other questions, we'll look to you on the Davis Hondros motion to continue to 12626. All right. Look to you for your vote. Councilmember Banks McGlaughlin?
Ray it.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, that carries. So, those voting against Jensen Benevente and Banks McGlaughlin, the rest voting for Mr. Harmon or Madam Attorney, as mentioned, like the courts usually will give you three continuances. Is in any way that this can be impressed upon these folks that we either need to hear this or dispose of it?
A member of the body could include that in a motion.
Well, I think we just voted on that one, but.
Could take another motion from the floor.
You want, well, I don't want to complicate it, but I think that's something that needs to be communicated, just, you know, in respect of time, you know, as an incident, and then, you know, at some point, the courts do say after two or three times.
I mean, I'm willing to make the motion, but I do have a question before the motion. So, when did the email come in that they were not going to be able to be here?
It was originally sent, let me pull that up to make sure I have it.
It was originally sent, let me pull that up to make sure I have it correct, ma'am. The official request to table was Friday, October 10th. I responded on Monday, October 13th.
So my next question is, when we have six people here that signed up, did we call them?
Uh, I actually called the ones that we had phone numbers for. We did not have phone numbers for every one of them, but I did call the ones we had numbers for.
Okay, so, and, and I, I'm just going back to what was said. This is the second night that they have come and we, so if we had ample time, I just don't understand that. But if, but what I'll do is, what was the motion again? I'm sorry.
Well, it was basically just to, to, uh, you know, do a new motion, just to impress that, uh, I think if, if the council passes, is that to imply or to, to, uh, communicate that this was the last continuance.
That third time is it?
It's either they can withdraw and start over or, or something to dispose of it.
Okay, so I make a motion that if the applicant does not show up at the next one on January twenty-sixth, I think it was, that they will need to, um, withdraw the application and start all over.
All right. You had a question, Miss Harmon? All right, there's a question. Councilmember Hondros, so let me, let me get this. As a motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by, uh, Councilmember here. You had a question, Councilmember Hondros?
Yeah, I just, I don't know that I can support this. If this isn't part of our policy and we've never done this before, I think, Mr. Mayor, you had, um, mentioned communicating, uh, council's desire of that, but to make a formal, I just don't want them treated necessarily any different than anybody else. So either, I mean, this is something we can look at either Policy Committee or any other committee of, of putting in our, uh, policies or creative ordinances, but if, if there's no limit to this, uh, codified in our code of ordinances or policies, I don't know why we're treating this applicant any different than any other. E, either there is a limit or there's not.
I can retract that and just say to take it back to the Policy Committee.
But I.
But I also think that we need to, in the Policy Committee, talk about getting phone numbers.
Well, well, let me say this. Uh, my purpose was to be able to communicate some reasonable expectation to the applicant to say that if, if this is something that's held our docket twice. So I don't know that it needs to be a policy change in order for the board to always have discretion as to when to apply, uh, guidance for people because they're bringing this, they're holding space. Um, you know, I understand emergencies happen, but typically, uh, the courts, you'll hear them say, as, as Councilmember Benevente said, that, you know, this will be the next time or the last time. And so if that needs to be wrapped up in a motion, but I think this is mainly Councilmember Hondros to see if the board had a will to communicate that. Now, it doesn't necessarily have to be a resolution or any, any type of ordinance, but it will just be something that can be communicated on behalf of the council when they notify the applicant of his approved continuance. So is, is that, are you still okay with that?
I'd need to hear the motion restated.
All right.
So if I get it right, the motion is to make sure that the applicant is aware that if he does, he or she does not show up on January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, that they will have to start the application process over.
Twenty twenty-six.
Twenty twenty-six, I'm so sorry. January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-six, that they will have to start the process over.
Well, and, and if I may, as well, Mr. Mayor, I think we, we can say that they will not get another continuance, but I don't think we can force them to withdraw.
Okay. That's better. That's better. They will not get another continuance. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember, uh, here and then Thompson.
Um, now, we don't have policy for ongoing items to be con- continued. Then, are you saying that it's out of order or not moved to go forward to the Policy Committee, at least for some discussions of this? Because this is something that could continue to come forward, uh, again.
So, only thing I was saying, that was Councilmember Hondros's position. I'm saying that the, the body, the board, needs the discretion because each situation is different. So you wouldn't want to make a firm policy that you may have to make an exception for if you broke it and said that you only get three continuances and then some extenuating circumstance happens. So the only thing I was trying to do was get enough of a consensus that it could be communicated when they give him his new date to say that the council is going to be ready to hear this matter on January twenty-sixth.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that. I'm ready to vote.
All right. Any, uh, Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just sitting up here thinking, because there is no policy as the policy chair. And, Mr. Harmon, has this occurrence ever happened before?
Yeah, we, we've had it come up before, where we've had multiple requests for, uh, table.
Continuances. And what was done in those instances? How many times do you know that an item was taped?
Probably around threes, as many as I can think of, but there, there could be some point in the past where we've done more than that. I just don't recall.
So was there any suggestion of creating a policy or ordinance to preclude them from having more than three extensions?
Not that I recall in the past.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So I think, I think where we're talking about what is going on here, and I stated that, is that we have had people come out to speak twice, and they've waited here, they've come up, and we've said, we're continuing it. I think if we knew on October 12th, if we could have gotten in touch with them and said, this is going to be continued, then that would have been a different story. So that's when I said I can bring it back to ask that. But if I need to withdraw the motion, I can do that if it's going to take another thirty minutes.
Hold it a second for clarification. I'll come to you.
DJ.
All right, here. All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Mayor Protem, I like that idea now that I think about it, because that can be brought back to policy, that we get the phone numbers of these individuals. So when we have ample enough time to notify them that this is going to be tabled, they don't have to show up. That we can bring back to policy, Mr. Mayor.
My only concern with that is that when it's notified, they don't know it's going to be tabled until council comes together.
Right.
And we don't come together until our meeting. So I don't think that's going to work.
Yeah. Because it's just a request. It's just a request, so council may or may not grant it at the time, so.
Can I go back to my motion?
Let me, let me bring it back to this particular case, right? We, we have continued this to January the twenty-sixth of twenty-six. The only question I pose for the body is, is there a will to communicate for this case that to imply, uh, or to, to communicate to the applicant that we will be ready to move forward on January twenty-sixth? That's the question that I have today. Now, if there's a broader question, can we just capture that separately? All right, so, so the vote will be, uh, or whatever consensus you'll need, um, Ms. Manager, Acting Manager, uh, for the city to notify him of that, if there's a consensus of this body, that please be prepared on January twenty-sixth.
Yes, sir. If that's the will of council, we can certainly communicate that.
All right, council, so this is just a temperature check on your will. So, Madam, uh, Mayor Protem, is your motion still standing or you want to do something different?
I think exactly what you're saying is my, is my motion.
Okay. All right. So we're ready to go. All right. Council, I'll look to you for action. This is consensus to communicate what was stated. Uh, Madam, can you clear the system for us, Jen? Uh, I'm still. All right, there we go. All right. Uh, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Green.
All right. All right. So, Mr. Harmon, you got it. It's communicated.
Oh, sorry.
All right. Uh, those voting in oppose, uh, Councilmember Hondros in green, uh, motion carries eight to two. Uh, so look forward to, uh, dealing with this again with twenty-sixth. All right. So, um, item nine point oh-two. Uh, Mr. Harmon, is that you as well?
It is, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. The other public hearing we have this evening is an annexation. Uh, you may recall during your consent, uh, agenda, you, uh, tentatively approved a new zoning for this property. If it is annexed, uh, that new zoning would be LI or Light Industrial. Uh, this is property owned by CRA Commercial Development. Uh, Ms. Lori Epler with Larry King and Associates is representing them. Uh, it's located at thirty-four fifty-six Black and Decker Road. Uh, it's just over two and a half acres. This is in Councilman Davis's jurisdiction. Just to give you an idea of where the property is located, uh, we've got Black and Decker here. This is the Walmart that faces Gillespie here. Um, all of these, uh, properties through this area are all either city or county industrial properties. Uh, this property is currently zoned MP in the county, which is manufacturing, which is their version of our, uh, industrial districts. Currently, the property is, uh, vacant and wooded. Just some photos of some of the surrounding things. There is a, um, housing development kind of to the south, mainly to the south and some to the east of the property. But other than that, everything is industrial around it. Uh, staff does recommend adoption of this proposed ordinance, uh, annexing, uh, this property with an effective date of today. Um, if you have any questions of this, if you would, wait, uh, to pose those to staff after your, uh, legislative hearing is over.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Harmon. With that, we'll open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk?
Mayor, we have one speaker, Ms. Lori Epler.
Ladies and Ms. Epler, how are you?
Well, um, Mr. Mayor and council, uh, as you heard, um, the initial zoning was passed on your consent agenda, so we're just asking for the annexation so that this property can be developed. Uh, if you have any questions, that's why I'm here. Otherwise, I'll let you get on with your business.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, council, have any, Councilmember Davis, you had a question?
Uh, yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, if there's no questions, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay. Let me scan your colleagues. I don't see any. All right. Let me, uh, close the public hearing. Thank you, Ms. Epler.
Thank you.
All right. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I, uh, move to adopt the annexation ordinance with the effective date of October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
All right. This is motion by Councilmember Davis, seconded by Councilmember Thompson to adopt, and the ordinance that approves annexation. Any discussion on that? All right, council, I'll look to you for your votes. Screen ain't working with us tonight, is it, Jen? All right. Uh, Councilmember Banks McLaughlin?
Green.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. Uh, all right, council, motion to adjourn?
Question me before we adjourn.
Yes, sir. Oh. Oh. Man, I done got excited. Oh, we skipped the item. So that's what it is. All right. Sorry about that, chiefs. We still cool. I'm sorry. All right. We, we moved the nine-point items to the middle, so I'm sorry. My fault. All right. Councilmember here, I got excited.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to make sure before we, uh, we move to that item, want to make sure I'm on the same page because we did not speak of it down here, but in our consent item, uh, seven point zero A five, and, uh, the time that I was speaking of in our pre-meeting for zero, I mean, for nineteen twelve, uh, Merkison Road for the demo, and, uh, the, the additional time that I was having the discussion about and that it would be worked out between the, um, the owner and staff, did we need to do anything about that? Because nothing was said upstairs and it was, and it was just left.
It's passed. Right now, the order's in place, uh.
Well, the order, it was not to change the order.
Right.
It was to give the property owners, uh, sixty days to work with staff on whatever corrections or other provisions they, they were having the discussion about.
So.
And that was what, but I never was taking it off of the demo.
I understand. So right now, there's a demo order, right, that will go through its process, which is more than likely that long, but, um, uh, you all want to speak to the process?
And, and I, and I understand that, and thank you, Mayor, but so that we can have something in the minutes to support what the discussion was.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, so Councilmember here, we're gonna have to, what we'll do is, if you want to, because that item's gone, so you'll have to reintroduce something, uh, to, to go back and deal with that. You're saying to put some, some terms or provisions. Let me go to the attorney from a procedural standpoint. Uh, Ms. ACM Strickland, how does that work?
Yes, sir. Um, we could work with all, um, property owners once you all approve a demolition ordinance. Um, our efforts to obtain voluntary compliance does not stop there. Um, and we do not have the ability to turn around the day after you all approve an ordinance and go out with a contractor.
Right. Which I mentioned to the property owner.
Yes, sir. There is a process. It does take some time. And certainly during the time where we're still running our process to identify who our contractor is going to be and get them under contract, we're also in communication with property owners if it's the, the property owner's desire to bring the property into compliance.
Right.
We certainly continue to work with them right up until the very last second.
Well, then, if, if I could, just putting it in the minutes, not trying to change what has already been approved, I, I would like for that discussion to be full, that full discussion to be with, uh, the twenty oh-five, um, Merkison Road property.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
All right. I think the clerk captured at least the recording, so she'll document it accordingly. All right, moving to, to eight point oh. Chief Dove, where you at, man? I, I didn't, I didn't mean to leave you out. Come on up.
We can go.
All right. Good to see you, chief.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Fire Chief Kevin Dove before you tonight to present the twenty twenty-five Fire Department Third Quarter Report. First, we want to share a few quick highlights from the third quarter. We advertised a hiring process for our planned January twenty twenty-six academy, and we received two hundred and forty-five applicants. Sixty-three percent of those applicants were from underrepresented populations and forty were female. Twenty-five recruits graduated from our fire academy and are completing EMT school as we speak. Uh, we're excited to have these recruits on the fire trucks next week. Uh, something really exciting, our search and rescue team completed training in the new house underwater training prop at the Fayetteville Tech Regional Fire Training Facility. This prop is the first of its kind in the world.
Hmm.
Um, our folks have the opportunity to simulate working in and train on traversing a flooding house and removing themselves and victims from windows and attics during those situations. I want to take a minute to recognize the folks at FTCC. They bend over backwards to ensure that our responders have everything they need to operate safely and successfully in any situation, and this is just the latest example. Our third quarter call volume was seven thousand five hundred ninety-three total calls for service, with August being the busiest at twenty-six hundred and twenty of those. Here are incidents by category. As always, our medical and rescue calls are the lion's share at four thousand eight hundred fifty-four. There were eight hundred and forty-two service calls, and these include things like water leaks, public service lift assists, assist police with some equipment, and illegal burning. There were seven hundred and ninety-three good intent calls, and these are largely calls that were canceled en route to or smoke scares or no incident found upon arrival. There were six hundred and fifty-nine false fire alarms, two hundred and twenty-nine fires, and two hundred and thirteen hazardous condition calls. These are not to be confused with hazardous materials calls, even though hazardous materials calls fall into there. But these also include things like power lines down, overheated motors, electrical arcing from damaged or defective equipment. Our response times remain consistent and well under our eight-minute total response time goal. We responded to fifty structure fires. Nineteen of those started in the kitchen. That number's trending back down in the right direction, so we're happy with that, but we've still got work to do. There were no fire fatalities, eight civilian injuries, and three firefighter injuries. Sixty-eight percent of the structure fires were contained to the room of origin. We were able to improve our dollar saved ratio. This quarter, we're at ninety-seven point three percent, which means while we had one point five million in property loss, we saw fifty-eight point four million in property saved. There were twenty-three vehicle fires, four incendiary fires, and one lithium ion battery fire. Top three fire losses last quarter were a multifamily dwelling on Tolstone Drive, a single-family dwelling on Elmhurst Drive, and a commercial structure on Merkison Road. As we said, there were four thousand eight hundred fifty-four medical responses. As you can see, the overdose responses and Narcan administered by the Fire Department continue trending downward. There were sixty-five total hazmat responses. Thirty-eight of those were natural gas leaks, five were carbon monoxide responses, twelve hydrocarbon spills, and our regional response team responded to five calls outside of the city. Onto our human capital. At the end of the third quarter, we had six firefighter vacancies and one fire inspector vacancy. Just last Monday, we welcomed Academy two dash twenty-five, so as of today, we don't have any firefighter vacancies, and we're only carrying one fire inspector vacancy.
Pretty good, sir.
We had eight resignations, three retirements, and one reinstatement. Of the eight resignations, only one left for another job in the fire service. And again, that's big for us and our business. We're up to twenty-five percent underrepresented population at the end of the third quarter. While this number is still short of our goal of thirty percent, it is the highest in my tenure. And with the outcome of our hiring processes, we look forward to continuing to move that to the goal. As you can see here, our training and recruitment staff stayed busy in the third quarter. They did hiring, career development, promotions, and continuing education for our department. The department as a whole completed nearly thirty-four thousand hours of training in the third quarter alone. Our goal is not to train until we get it right. Our goal is to train until we can't get it wrong. Moving into the Fire Marshal's Office. As you know, we've had a significant makeover of our Fire Marshal's Office in the past year and a half. We've added staff and refocused some efforts with several goals in mind. The overarching goal is that everyone that does business in the city of Fayetteville does it safely while meeting the intent of the fire code. Nothing more, nothing less. The second goal is that every patron and every business in the city of Fayetteville is safe and not exposed to any harm. Lastly, we want to ensure that anyone and everyone that wants to do business in the city can do it with us providing timely plan reviews and permitting from the Fire Department side. As you can see, new plan reviews are up by over five hundred. These are things like building plans, site plans, fire extinguishment systems, gates and barricades, and many other things. These are often requested as express reviews, and with our reconfiguration of the office, we're now able to meet the time requirements set forth by general statute. Our fire inspections are down slightly, even with the new staff. This is because we have three new inspectors in training and they're shadowing. They'll be released within the next month, and this number will increase significantly next quarter. Fire inspections and maintenance inspections include apartments, group homes, foster homes, hotels, and any other commercial occupancy. They also include tent inspections, special event inspections, and fireworks inspections. Depending on the occupancy type, these are done on a one-year, two-year, or three-year rotation per general statute. Now, the fire code violations shook me up some because they're up dramatically. The number took me by surprise because it doesn't correlate to an increased number of inspections like twenty-twenty-four did. So a great deal of my time, and probably some of the time when I should have been sleeping, was going over these numbers, trying to digest them and working with the Fire Marshal to understand the data. The real and honest answer is our Fire Marshal's Office is just doing a better job. But I want, and I need everyone to understand, we're not in the gotcha business. That's not what we do when we do inspections. We're in the business to make everything meet fire code. Now, with that said, forty-seven percent of these violations are identified and corrected at the same time. So as the inspector and the occupant walk through the business, they identify them, they fix them, everything's good. This doesn't require any re-inspections or money out of our business owners' pockets. The rest are largely things that require a licensed contractor to fix or additional parts or materials that aren't immediately available. We then follow up in thirty days to confirm that these items have been addressed. I say all that to say that we, as a department, need to do a better job of educating our business owners before the inspection. We have to give them the test, but we can also give them the answers to the test before we get there. So you're going to soon be seeing some social media information, podcasts with information. We're going to send out flyers and other educational information to our business owners and be looking to do some other creative outreaches by our Fire Marshal's Office, our community risk reduction folks, and the help of the city's marketing and communications group. It's our goal and our responsibility to make information available to business owners so that we can set them up for success, and so that's what we're going to do. The top five violations that we found are electrical issues, portable fire extinguishers, general items such as address markers, and outdated equipment, emergency power systems, and fire protection equipment. So now we're moving on to the community risk reduction, the good stuff. The third quarter allowed us to engage six thousand six hundred fifty-five residents, attend one hundred and sixty-four community events, install three hundred and forty-three smoke alarms, eighty-four carbon monoxide alarms, and three stove top fire suppressors. We installed and or corrected fifty-nine child safety seats, taught three hundred and fifty-eight more folks hands-only CPR, gave eight station tours, and held three youth fire setter interventions. And now, like a broken record, as always, then, smoke alarms save lives, folks. I don't know how else to say it. Fire does not discriminate. If you or anyone you know needs a smoke alarm or needs one check, please call us immediately at four-three-three-one-one-one-six, and we'll be there promptly to take care of you at no cost. No one should lay their head down to sleep without a working smoke alarm. And with that, I'm happy to take your questions.
Thank you, chief. Great presentation. Councilmember here.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions, just want to continue to give a thumbs up to that last scan bar that you had up there on screen. Chief, would you put it back, please, about the free smoke detector so citizens can look at it again? I just want to support that statement that you said, chief, that smoke detectors, they do, and smoke alarms, they do save lives. And we can't say it enough. We give this information out to all of our community watch or community meetings. I give it all the time. I know the number by heart, and so we continue to push. And I love to give you all accolades on this because I have had a smoke detector and a carbon monoxide, carbon monoxide detector installed free by our Fire Department. Great job, put it in the perfect places wherever you all thought they needed to be cleaned up after yourselves, and was gone in about twenty minutes. So thank you, and I hope that our citizens will write down this number, four-three-three-one-one-one-six, or take a picture and scan the bar because truly, smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors save lives. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
And you also see those QR codes on our fire trucks now. They're on there. If you see it at the grocery store or at a community event, you can walk up to the side of the truck and scan it.
Great, they work.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, chief, for another great presentation. I'm excited that we're getting more done with less. That's very impressive. But two questions. Can you explain to the public why there was such a large increase in the calls in August?
Those, there are ebbs and flows. That really wasn't anything too exciting in our world. It's really about a hundred calls more than July. And you got to think, most kids are out of school, families are on vacation, there's a lot of travel at the mall, getting ready for school, so that just, people are busy.
Outstanding. This is more of a question that I don't know if I should address you or the city manager in his absence. Being retired military, I know the effects that your occupation can have on your life, not just while you're in that occupation, but also after you retire. I know our first responders, fire and police, see some things that most average person doesn't see. What precautions do we have or programs or counseling do we have to help these individuals during their tour and after they retire?
I'll take care of this one if you want. Up until about probably three years ago, three years ago maybe, mental health was taboo in our business, okay? So we're just starting to unpack the box. There is no perfect answer for your question. We are doing things. We brought on our first dog. We have another dog coming. We have peer support internal, we have peer support offered by the state, we have chaplain's corps, we have EAP, we have all those things. We have our fingers on the pulse of what everybody's doing nationally. My Metro Chiefs Group, we communicate regularly about it. Everybody's trying to figure that out. But the biggest thing that we don't have an answer for is post-employment because all of our stuff is available to our working folks. So once you retire, there is... I mean, still our internal peer support and our state peer support is available. But after that, I don't know what... We don't have a good answer just yet. But we are, we're on it every day with our ears to the, ears to the street. We're watching, there's some other municipalities that have brought on some clinicians and done some things. We're watching those daily. We're trying to get the results from that. But I am comfortable and confident saying that anything that I come up with, I'll get full support from the city manager's office and from you guys because I've never not gotten that support. So I know that didn't answer your question, but...
It did answer my question.
I hope that you're comfortable knowing that we have a health and safety officer, one of our assistant chiefs. We do know it's an issue. We are actively looking, but there is no answer at this time.
Let me just say that that was a conversation piece that we had during one of my chat and chews about some of the trauma that our first responders go through by some of the scenes that they have to go to. And it's traumatizing. And it stays with you for the rest of your life, and you're going to need that exterior help either now or in the future. We want to make sure that's available for all our first responders. So that is a great answer. Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, Councilmember Davis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think on the slide where you had the fire inspections, I wanted to thank you for, I think you say you get ready to inform the business owners and community of reference to violations because I receive a lot of phone calls and text messages and emails of reference to like churches that are stalled on projects and businesses because of the violations because they don't understand what the process is. So I just want to thank you for that, sir.
Yeah, that's, we, like I said, we have to give you the test, but there's nothing saying we can't give you the answers to the test beforehand.
If there's no other questions, I'm ready to make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Send your hand, sir.
I move that we accept a report from the Fire Department.
All right, there's a motion by Councilmember Thompson, seconded by Councilmember Davis. Discussion. All right, Council, I'll look to you before you vote. Councilmember Banks-McGloffen?
Brian.
All right. All right, great job, chief, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, it's unanimous. And to your team, chief. We know no man's island by itself, so thank you to all the firefighters and to your team as well, first responders. All right, Chief Bryant, where are you at, sir? It's your turn, come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First of all, I'd like to give Chief Dove and his team a round of applause in regard to being able to fill those vacancies because I understand the challenge it is today. And so it is extremely impressive when they're able to fill all their vacancies. So I know what the conversation's been on there. So Mayor, City Council, senior leadership team, junior madam... Oh, she's already left. Junior madam mayor, has to go to school. My name is Robert O'Brien. I'm the chief of police for Fayetteville Police Department. I'm here to present our third quarter report today. Here is our slide. Okay. All right. All right, as you'll see, our third quarter report will cover January through September twenty-twenty-five. On our slide here, we'll cover our crime statistics, our crime trends, our fighting, crime-fighting strategies, and our community engagement. As you'll see on this slide here, in terms of what we're doing as a department, total crime is down by over ten percent, and our arrests are also down by just under one percent. You can see our persons against crime as well is down as well as our property crimes, and we continue to moving the downward trend. As you'll see, our violent crime, by far, the elephant in the room is regarding our homicides. Of course, you know, the beginning of the year, we were hit pretty hard with those incidents that took place. And so far, we're continuing to trend down, but because of that spike in the beginning of the year, we're still up at sixty-eight percent. But if you look at the rest of the part one crimes, rape, aggravated assaults, all other persons, those are all down double digits. So we're still being able to come ahead in terms of those numbers. As you'll see here, our homicide unit, where we have thirty-two incidents, thirty-four homicides, and you'll see also our overdoses and suicides.
Thirty-two homicides, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Just want to make sure the press got that. Mr. Duffy?
Not thirty, not thirty-four. You got it, all right.
So it's, so one of the things that I want to make sure too that we understand in terms of what we're looking at in terms of our homicide department, homicide unit, they're doing an exceptional job in terms of when we have the national rate for clearances about fifty-eight percent, our current stance right now is eighty-seven point five. And we just recently attended the IACP, it was the International Association of the Chief of Police, and they had other homicide units that were ranting about their numbers, and their numbers weren't even as good as ours. So I would definitely commend our homicide units in being able to solve these crimes and put these bad actors in jail in terms of what we're able to do here in the city of Fayetteville.
Mr. Mayor, can we ask questions as we go? You want to wait till the end?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think you just, I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Chief Bryant, go ahead.
Yeah, also, one, also want to kind of specify, in terms of these homicides, we have about ten of these incidents were domestic related, and another eighteen of these homicides where they were known individuals that knew each other. So none of these are just random in terms of, you know, random crimes. These are all individuals that know each other or have some type of relationship prior to. Regarding our domestic, these are our numbers. We are trending... Regarding our domestic, these are our numbers, we are trending, you know, down in terms of those numbers as well. And we continue to work with the Phoenix Center to make sure that those victims that are in these toxic relationships receive the, the assistance that they need to get out of that situation, and also that we encourage for them and do everything we can to go ahead for them to press charges against those abusers.
Chief, before you go into this one, Councilmember Thompson, you had something?
He answered the question, I wanted to know what was the breakdown of the homicides, were they domestic, how many were acts of kindness, I mean, acts of violence, whatever it was, so he answered that.
All right, all right, Chief.
All right.
Push your button, Councilman.
All right. So, next here is our ShotSpotter, is our slides here, you'll see our numbers regarding 340 alerts, and this breaks down by district, and also the shell casings that are also recovered in each district, guns, and also arrests resulting in those ShotSpot alert. I think one of the questions that came about last Friday in terms of when we have these arrests, out of these 14 arrests that we've had during this period, you're talking about 13 out of the 14 of these arrests were weapons recovered or related to a weapon. So, that is the numbers in terms of the requests that we had on Friday there, Councilmember Benevente. Through ShotSpot. Yes. Next slide is our ShotSpotter dashboard that any citizen here in Fayetteville or anywhere can go onto our website and you can see these numbers. What I'll also make sure that everybody understand, these numbers are continuously fluctuating in terms of when we have an analyst that is able to provide additional information. Now, one of the questions that came up just recently is regarding the blanks. And as you see up there, it shows like 246, so currently we're working with IT and members of their team with our team to figure out a, a better category, category in terms of blanks. So, there, it won't answer or raise questions regarding what is blank. Now, I'd like to give you an example of what we're talking about blank in terms of, I'll give you an example of this scenario here. We have, this was last Thursday about 9:30 last night, last Thursday about 9:30 last night. All of our commanders, we have this on our app on our phone. When we get an alert, this is what we experience and this is what we hear.
Jeez.
I'll play that one more time. And listen right after you heard the last shot, tell me what you hear.
A car.
Thank you. That's what we hear. This call we responded to, there was no 911 call. There were no witnesses. There were no victims.
Thank God.
But our officers responded and recovered shell casings. That is categorized as a blank until we're able to tie those casings to an incident or to another case. That is what ShotSpotter does. And that's what we're talking about, when we're talking about 80% of the alerts are those that are coming without a 911 call, but we're still able to gather something so that we can go ahead and move forward with an investigation. It might not happen today, it might not happen next month, months for now, but usually we're able to tie it up and then we're able to kinda piece together where those shell casings are with other incidents that may occur in and about the city.
So, Chief, I did, I did have two questions, I guess Councilmember Benevente changed his perspective and-
Well, since you were applying it to him, apply it to me.
That's right.
Thank you. Chief Bryant, now, I appreciate this anecdotal example, how often do you guys review the sounds of those, I guess, 200 blanks, or how many was it exactly?
246, sir.
How many, do you guys review every single one of them?
We, we, we have a, a analyst that is assigned to listen to every single call and then categorize them. And then they put in the notes whatever notes that the field may have. And, and this is why I, one of the things that we're trying to wanna make sure that we educate the public is that this is not something that is happening right away, because our analysts have to go through reports, they go through, they listen to these sounds, and then if any additional information that comes back from our NIBIN, which is where our casings to be able to connect to another case, then they're being able to connect that particular casings or that incident back to another case.
Chief, I understand that if you find casings that you're able to do the NIBIN stuff, I'm not talking about that. I'm saying of the 246 examples, what, what window of time was this 246, from January until today?
That's correct.
So, how many of those 246 has been reviewed?
So, as, as you see, they're, they're constantly being reviewed.
So, someone has listened to all 246 of those recordings?
Correct.
And you're saying that you're still unable to categorize them when you're listening to them?
Right, it's not only, not, it's not about just listening, it's whether or not we recovered any, any particular casings from that particular case, or if there was any witness or something that may come about later on that we're able to tie that particular incident to.
So, you were there when the Wilson Center kind of talked to us about the reason they were not able to give us as good of feedback as they did for Durham and Charlotte when it came to this program. And one of the reasons was because of the shoddy way that we collect data and that we report data when it comes to this program. And the reason I'm concerned about these blanks is because we are not actually asking the questions to give, I believe, a transparent and thorough answer to what this program does and doesn't do, because I know that it's always gonna be a chief or, or a department head of any department to say only the good things. But I really need somebody, and if it's not gonna be you, it's gotta be the city manager or somebody else to tell me what are the pros and also the cons, because if you can't be, I guess, fair in your assessment to say these are times when the ShotSpotter actually showed that it was a power tool. This was a time that ShotSpotter showed that it was, you know, somewhat, it was some other loud noise, because I've heard that from different members of your team, but I never hear it in public when it's time to actually be accountable to the citizens who want to know the good, the bad, and the ugly when it comes to a lot of money that we're spending on something, when, let's be honest, you just said it about the homicides, it's known people, it's domestic type situations, things that the police will never be able to really do anything about, that if we actually invested some of this money to help these people, that we start to eliminate the conditions that create those kinds of conflicts. But you're saying that, no, we need this money for these microphones, great, tell us the good, the bad, and the ugly. All 246 ones of those recordings, you've heard and you can confirm that they are indeed gunshots?
No, they're still, they're still being reviewed, sir.
So, when you pick out one just to show that, look, this is how it works, you give the impression that that's how it happened all 246 times, and that's not honest.
Well, it's not, I'm not, when, what we're talking about, that specific incident, but also, sir, if you can look at the misclassification by type, that is also where we're showing you that there's a false positive, where we have two false positive or three, three mislocated shots as well.
And what were those?
So, those, I couldn't tell you what those, I can tell you in terms of if it's a false positive, it was not a gunshot.
What was it then?
I, I, I couldn't tell you what it is, but I can tell you it wasn't a gunshot.
But do you see, like, what I mean, when you wanna brag about the one time that it sounds very, very dramatic, and then you avoid maybe showing us a power tool that might sound just as similar? So, you can imagine the question marks that other cities have come to to say, hey, are we getting what we're paying for? Because we've had independent people who did not have skin in the game, who were not chiefs of their department, who wanna paint things in a particular light, independent evaluators that said 23% of the time, you're getting good information. But then you come back and you say, actually, no, it is 99% of the time. And so, when I think about who's gonna be more likely to be honest about it, I, I'm thinking it's gonna be the independent evaluators without any skin in the game.
All right, Council, Councilmember, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll move on, we, we, let's, let's keep this in, in a inquisitive way and not accusatory way. All right, Councilmember Herring and I had a question, and Councilmember Thompson.
Well, Chief, a little bit where I differ is I'm happy out of, let's just, whatever, what was the number?
18 shots, sir.
Okay, but the 240?
Yes, sir.
Six, out of the 246, as I have stated from the very beginning of using every helpful tool in our arsenal to support the fight against crime and these shootings and whatever this was, thank God, nothing was going on, I'm, I'm proud of that. I'm, I'm proud of the one out of, and I know it's more, but this particular incident on Southern Avenue that there were, there were some shells in it, it, and if it wasn't for ShotSpotter, you said that there was no assistance of a 911 call with this. So, I, 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 I do, I, I do support that, I'm thankful for that. As has been said many times, if we can, if we can help or shut down one, I'm thankful for that and having that too. Now, my question also, because you said if there are shells, you're able to find shells and things along that line, and especially with this particular case, that you, you found some shells. Do you also, and this, this is just probably be a, a little crazy question, but do you also look for fingerprints on those shells?
Yes, sir, they'll, they'll do, our forensics will do a full analysis of everything that they can go ahead and recover from any shell casing that they also recover.
So, that is another part of a help with the ShotSpotter for this, you know, in the arsenal, in the toolbox. Not only can we get the shells, but we can also get any possible fingerprints.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mayor.
All right, Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief. I just wanna regurgitate something that I heard Chief Brayden speak of while he was the chief, and I'm glad to see him in the back row back there, is that he was trained on what a gunshot sounds like. And I know that all of your officers are trained, because they hear it all the time. So, I know that they know how to make a difference between what a gunshot is and what a power drill is. So, I'm thankful for the work that they've done, and the comment was made about shady work. I trust and believe that our officers are doing everything-
The term was shoddy.
Shoddy, shady, whatever determination that you use. I know that our police officers are truthful, I know that they are faithful, and I know that they're obligated to make sure they protect the citizens of this city, and I thank you for the work that you guys are doing.
Yeah, but don't misquote me, Thompson.
All right, thank you, you push your button if you want to.
So, just to clarify then, because what I'm talking about is the investigatory work.
Councilmember Benevente, it's, it's not your turn, I'll come back to you in a moment. I said it was Councilmember Thompson myself, and then press your button. All right.
Clarify.
Chief, thank you. Thank you for that, and what I'll say is this, there's two things that you mentioned. One, I, I know the year started off really, really tough for us. And I think during your first quarter presentation, I was looking for it, when it did the year-to-year comparison, it was like 300-plus percent. And so, it's, it's declined significantly. Do you remember what we were at the second quarter or the first, like, out of those 32, how many came the first three or four months, you know?
I know it was a lot, sir, but it was over, I know you were right, it was about over 300% at that time.
One of those reports, and then it trickled down to 60, so it's got a pretty sharp decline. I was just trying to see, I think it was like 25 the first three or four months?
366 was the percentage, 366 was the percentage at the time in terms of the comparison from 25 to 24.
And so, it's, so it's decreased significantly for it to be 60%, and that is just a comparison to where it was this time last year.
That's correct.
Right, and so, I wanted to highlight that because, you know, at some point, the community took a stance around April, May, when, when it was a, a highlighted discussion, and, and we can see that there's been a significant decrease. So, I'd like to see that maybe on, on some other chart that trends it by month to show, show if there was a precipitous drop in it. The other part I, I'd want to, to highlight is, I, I don't know about everybody, but to me, when you hear 18 shots or so, you know, I grew up in a neighborhood that you hear that, and to the point of where sometimes they don't call 911 every time, sometime, a, as you said. Now, for 14 guns to be recovered from, is, the 14 guns that were recovered, that's just from one district, right?
No, sir, that's across.
That's all across all of them.
Yes.
For this, for this quarterly, from January to, to September, so it's 14 guns recovered.
Correct.
And now, arrests made in somehow connection to that.
Correct.
I don't know how that's a bad thing, that, that 14 more guns off the street. The, the, the speed in which those shots came out, did that seem like a reckless semi-automatic? Was that pretty fast, rapid fire?
That, that was rapid fire, I wouldn't say that was fully automatic, but those, you know, it was a semi-automatic shot several times, yes, sir.
Yeah. So, I mean, that, that, if you got shell casings and, and at some point, you're matching these things to other incidents, and then eventually you make arrests, so I think what would be helpful is if maybe that placeholder wasn't called blank to leave open to interpretation blanks, maybe, or, or some unknown, maybe that could rename that to pending.
Investigation, and that's what we're, we're working right now with, with members of the senior leadership team to develop a, a, a better category so that blank won't be there. So, we're gonna do that and have that ready by the next quarter.
Right, well, and, and I'm sure, and the final thing I'll say before I go to, to Councilmember Benevente is I, I'm sure the residents on Southern Avenue appreciated you showing up after they heard that. And, and whether it leads to something today or it leads to something tomorrow, I don't think this is a bad thing for you to have an, an extra tool to put you on the right path, to show up and to respond. So, I'm glad, glad to hear you say that, and I look forward to continuing to hear more about it as we, as we analyze the data and everything. So, I'll go to Councilmember Benevente.
Yeah, I did have a question to clarify, but I just wanted to make sure that I wasn't being misquoted by Mr. Thompson. We had an independent evaluator say that the city of Fayetteville was not bringing data that other cities were keeping, and I use the term shoddy to describe our lack of data keeping in line with our peer cities. So, you can be offended by that if you'd like, but that's a simple fact that you've got to accept. City Attorney Pulliam, you provided me with arrest reports related to incidences around ShotSpotter. I'm counting more than four people that were unarmed. So, when the Chief of Police says that out of the 14, 13 were gun-related, how is that possible if I'm counting at least five that were unarmed people that were, that had warrants, but no firearms on their person when they're arrested within the ShotSpotter incident?
Sir, that data came from the police department.
Okay, so, Chief, I don't know if you can get something on a slide so we can have an official record, because I know that you're saying that 13 out of 14 were gun-related, but an incident on 2441 Old Wilmington Road, it says it was unarmed, that the place of arrest was Q Street, they were unarmed, that on Chesapeake Road, there was another individual who was unarmed who was arrested. I'm counting, again, more than just, how many did you say were not shots, were not firearm-related?
We have 14 subjects arrested, 13 out of the 14 was, was with a weapon.
Okay, so, I'll send you what the city attorney sent me, so that maybe you can look over it, and then I, I, this is why I wanted a slide to be included, because I think we lose something in translation here, and I want us to be accurate, because I, I'm very surprised by that number, and I, and I don't believe it's accurate, and, and for us to say out loud that 13 out of 14 of these guns, you know, happened, because it sounds like maybe the one that you pointed out the recording of, you didn't get those folks yet.
No.
Is that the only one?
No, there's many more that we have, and, and that's, and that's the thing.
Yeah, that is a thing.
It's a long process, and, and it's not one of these situations where we, I mean, because some of these alerts, there's not even any trace of evidence. So, so therefore, you know, until we are able to work through each piece, you know, we, we may get later on a, a, a video camera or, or someone providing information that will lead us to that car that was sped off, that tag, and then we're able to identify those individuals. So, it, it takes a little while, so.
Well, and that, and that's why cities who've implemented this program responsibly will keep that data for the folks in the white shirts to review, but they don't put it in the vehicle so that there's the unintended consequence of officers going into a situation hot, because we have had somebody killed, or excuse me, lost their life while in custody the first day we turned on ShotSpotter, and it's something that we conveniently refuse to acknowledge every time we talk- And it's something that we conveniently refuse to acknowledge every time we talk about the one life that it might have saved. Um I think at some point, we've got to be a little bit more honest about this technology and not just be the cheerleaders without any sense of deference to what community members have shared with us. You know, one thing that I cannot wait, and I and I guess we're not going to be hearing it on November first because we moved the work session unnecessarily, is that there are citizens in these areas that don't want ShotSpotter, and there's very legitimate reasons why, but we're not having anybody on this council um that is willing to give those people a voice because they're stuck on the cop the the cop propaganda. Yeah, the bootlicking, yeah.
All right, Councilwoman McNair, your first time.
Um yes, sir. Um thank you, Chief. Um, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to
To receive your report.
Receive the report.
Yeah, I think we've got a little bit more to get. Uh is the manager's button pushed?
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
If if I may add, um Steph has heard the comments and the feedback we've gotten from council, especially after the study, the results of the study were published. Um and Chief Bryant did mention that um we have assembled a working group that includes PD, OCS, the City Manager's Office, and SPA. Um and we are working to close those gaps in our data um and working to try and come up with um a better and more consistent framework that tracks the performance of ShotSpotter and the impacts of the community on our investigations and how that data affects our community. So we hear you, and we are working on it.
Thank you, ma'am, for that update. All right, uh I'll come back to you, Councilwoman McNair, to receive it. I think Chief has a few more slides. Go ahead, Chief, I'm sorry.
We'll try to get through these here. Uh this is our collaboration with our federal uh partners, and the results of these uh working with our federal partners here, you'll see the the amount of federally indicted individuals that have been arrested and seizures related to that, as well as firearms and uh currency seized. At this time, you'll see our uh the numbers regarding our uh Group A crimes in terms of the percentage. Again, you'll see the numbers are all uh down except for robbery, which is up by one point two one uh percent, but we're doubled, we're almost double digits on all the categories in terms of our property crimes. Here we have our numbers regarding our juveniles from January through September twenty-fifth. One of the questions that also what we were trying to do is to provide some insight in total incident charges from twenty-four to twenty-five, and we're up about almost seventeen percent reflected on this slide here. The most uh pressing issue that we see here right now is the robbery, where it has almost doubled in terms of uh from twenty-four to twenty-five with a hu- an increase of a hundred and six percent. So um we're we're tackling that as as much as we can in terms of uh with those involved in these juveniles. Next here, you'll see uh by quarter, the field contacts, their incident reports, and total incident charges that we've had. Again, assaults is high in 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 these numbers in terms of what we're looking at uh across the board. And lastly, these are slides pertaining to the juvenile protective order. Here it goes from eleven PM to six AM, the field contacts, the incidents, reports associated with these, and the total charges.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question about this slide? Go after Councilmember here. Where you finish her?
Yes, sir.
All right, Councilman here and then Benavente.
Thank you, Mayor. Um it it wasn't so much on these particular um slides, so if this is not the time, let me know. I'll get it later. Uh during our uh FY twenty-five budget, we discussed uh some things that we were looking for, that we there was a request for uh more speed centuries, uh our cameras that we were looking at and and other forms of technology, but especially those those two, because that's something I speak about a lot during my community meetings. I did I did receive a message that, I don't know if they said the speed centuries were in or close bit, well, I won't even try to say. If you could, can you give us if this is the time between you or our assistant manager on where where are we standing with the the speed century and uh our new camera technology that we were asking for?
So, yes, yes, sir. So I can I can provide some of that information in terms of, so we're we're going in in a phase process in terms of our technology. Right now, one of the first priorities was upgrading our server room, which has already taken place. And then now we're in the process of uh obtaining several different software, whether it be artificial intelligence to help us with this. But also, we have looked into the speed centuries. We deployed several speed centuries throughout based on their requests from city council members throughout the city, but we also are uh obtaining more speed centuries, and we're also going to get some more for the school zones in terms of being able to have those deployable all throughout the school zones as well.
Yeah, and 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 thank you for that because I did get uh some deployments out in Scotty Hills and out in um the Summer Hill community, but I was talking about the the additional ones, and we're not there yet?
We're not there yet. We we have um, we've got, we received the quotes, but we haven't pushed the 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 button to pick out which one we're going to go ahead and take.
And and the ones that are are coming, is there any additional data that it will be bringing? Or is it some of what we already getting, or is anything new is going to be attached with these new centuries?
Well, with that, but also we have our license plate readers, which is going to be critical. And us being able to are doing inflections, so we're also doing that as well uh throughout the city to uh broaden our footprint. And and that's one of the things that I would say that we we lack in terms of our disbursement of cameras throughout the city. You know, I came from Fayetteville State where we had over eight hundred cameras on that small campus.
Wow.
The city here is about two fifty, three hundred. So we got some work to do. We're already moving, and we're moving it up, and we're going to continue moving forward so that we can be uh utilizing the technology where we don't have the personnel to be able to do that.
Yeah, well, we'll be glad to get them because our our residents, they do ask about them.
Yes, sir.
Of course, I'll bring it back to you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh Councilman Benavente.
Trying to understand the curfew eleven to six juvenile crimes, it's number thirteen. Are you saying that of that total number from quarter three, are those instances where you approached a young person for violating the curfew? Or are these just incidences that occurred in that window of time? These are incidents that happen within that window of time. Okay, so have there been any times where the youth curfew was the impetus for an interaction with a young person? Sir, I will tell you that most of the time that we approach these young people, we're looking at some other type of crime associated with it. That makes a lot of sense to me because, you know, my concern was always that you guys have enough serious stuff going on during these hours that a curfew, at best, is redundant, and at worst, creates unnecessary interaction with with uh citizens. So that's why when you heard people talk about, hey, what if someone just looks like they might not be eighteen? I think you guys are busy with real stuff that you don't have to really worry about that potential. But was there any time where the youth curfew was you, we always talk about all the tools that we like to give you guys in your toolbox. Did you ever utilize that tool? That tool is not one of the ones that we're going to utilize as our first option. Did you use it at all thus far? No, sir. That's it. That's all I'm questioning. Thank you, sir. No, sir.
All right, Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, uh Mayor. Thank you, Chief. Uh I have a question about the juveniles uh B and Es for motor vehicles. It went down, but is there a shift changing? Because now the robberies are going up.
Sir.
And what type of robberies are we talking about?
So they could be common law robberies, and usually most of the robberies are of, you know, threat and intimidation. So therefore, that's going to be considered to be a robbery versus a larceny, something like that. But those those are the ones that we see that's going in there. Now, it's going to be hard to say based on, we're we're still early on into this um collecting data, so it's going to take a little time for us to be able to show what impact that we're able, you know, actually having regarding the uh the protective order. So it's going to take a little time for us to be able to go ahead and start looking at the numbers and seeing what impact that we're having in terms of with juvenile crime.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, Chief, I did have a question. So uh are the the juvenile assaults, do they include what happens at a school? Somebody gets charged or gets in a fight and so.
That is correct, sir.
So so really, that number is all encompassing of school activity where things like that tend to happen?
That is correct, sir. And you, we have another slide here that would also show show those events as well.
Okay.
This next slide is um in collaboration with uh Director John Jones's office, Office of Community Safety. As you'll see here, uh we've done numerous collaborations with them where we've reached out to them on thirty-two calls for unhoused community where they've come out and helped us out. Uh they also acquired two uh PD um professional staff on their team now that was working on some of the uh items that the Office of Community Safety will be assisting in now, and we continue to support them in any night events that they may have as well. So uh I know Director Jones is going to have a more comprehensive report later on for you all, but I just wanted to highlight some of the collaboration that we've already started with Office of Community Safety. Here's the uh calls starting of August twenty-fifth through September thirtieth, where you see um the calls for service with two hundred and sixty-seven, with ninety-five incident reports, which is goes back to our uh full comprehensive of report, but these are what has taken place at the schools. And currently, we have fourteen certified SROs. We're going to be moving that number to eighteen in January.
Great.
Here's our vice suppression for narcotics. As you see, our fentanyl, um we had to correct the slide. Our actual fentanyl seizure from twenty twenty-four was four point seven one, and we're up to nineteen nineteen kilos at this time. And I I think we've explained to you the 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 impact that a small amount of fentanyl can have on our city. These are our numbers are for nine-one-one dispatch. Here you you see, there's been a hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred calls, and um with fire and then for a total of a hundred and fifty-three thousand. Also, you'll see on the slide here is the admin calls that our dispatch center has for over a total of two hundred and ninety-two thousand calls. Traffic enforcement, I want to touch base a little bit regarding that. As you see these numbers here, at every community meeting, any encounter that I have with a citizen, their concerns are speeding, careless and reckless, folks driving through the red light. These are the results of these that we see in the city. And the only way that we're going to be able to change this behavior is by enforcement. And you'll see that being demonstrated in the upcoming slides. This is our numbers or our map of our moving violations through January to September, as well as our non-moving violations. Very important for us to do, uh you know, enforce both of those. Here, Councilwoman Benavente was asking the numbers to show from twenty-four to uh compared to twenty twenty-five. As you'll see, we're up just over fi- uh almost five thousand uh stops, total stops, from January through September twenty twenty-five. Also, this is the breakdown uh by demographics. As you'll see, the numbers, they have uh raised in each of the categories. Also, you'll see uh the numbers in terms of searches from twenty twenty-four also to twenty twenty-five. Even though the numbers are has raised from twenty-four to twenty-five, you'll notice that the percentage is almo- literally almost the same, three point four seven percent, exactly the same in in terms of vehicle searches. Chief, just to clarify my request, um the data that I feel like is not being compared appropriately, I think you guys did an accurate job on slide twenty-two when you showed the disparity between white drivers being stopped and it being double, that black drivers are being stopped. But the more dramatic number is the number of searches. I think a bar graph showcasing the difference between it looks like just a hundred and two versus almost nine hundred, eight hundred and seventy-three is the kind of dramatic difference in the number of folks being searched that is what's concerning to people. So that was the graph that I feel like is not um being presented here, that eight hundred and seventy-three versus a hundred and twenty or a hundred and two is is a dramatically different number. So we'll we'll go to that next slide, which you're seeing. So you saw that percentage. So this is the results of these searches as well in terms of what we're able to seize in terms of drugs and weapons, where we're almost about forty percent, forty-one percent uh in uh black drivers' vehicle results from twenty-four, and also in twenty twenty-five, where actually we're up at sixty-one percent in terms of seizures and also up in weapon seizures as well. And it's noteworthy, I think, that for white drivers, it's also sixty percent when it comes to drugs. And I'm going to show you on the next slide here, as you see, uh the vehicle stops. Yeah, where you're talking about that hundred and two, we had one point two percent. Uh in two thousand twenty-four, we actually went up to two percent in um twenty-five. But I'll let you see the next slide, which kind of shows a little bit of correlations of what we're able to result. So therefore, we're talking about about forty-seven percent of the times we're seizing drugs and uh eighteen, just over eighteen percent of weapons among white drivers in twenty twenty-four. But if you look in twenty twenty-five, we have sixty percent in drugs being seized and twelve percent in weapons. And and I guess what I'm hoping that not only I try to illustrate every time we do this, but you know, in that book that I shared with you and with Director John Jones, the research shows that black, white, Asian, Hispanic, once an officer appropriately decides that not only am I going to stop this vehicle, but I'm appropriately going to say that they need to be searched now, the likelihood of there being some kind of contraband is fairly equal across all demographics. So then the question becomes if, why is it that one group ends up being stopped so many times more when the ratios are fairly equal? And I think the answer there is not necessarily your responsibility to resolve necessarily. I think you said something a moment ago, and I want to make sure I heard you correctly, that changing behavior can only happen through enforcement? Yes, sir. And I I think that's that's a huge misstatement because really, infrastructure changes can change how fast someone is going down a street without necessarily it having to be an enforcement matter. Um how many times does someone get a speeding ticket before they never speed again for the rest of their lives? I don't I don't think there's a limit. I think people will always speed if they can get away with speeding if you're not around. So what I'm saying is it'll never be the case that you are on every single street every time someone is speeding. We've got to change the infrastructure at times to address that. It's not just a behavior thing. Sir, y- you could have an infrastru- infrastructure set up, but if if individuals continue to speed and feel that they can continue to speed without any penalty, they will. Doesn't matter of the infrastructure. But when when individuals believe that, hey, I'm going to get stopped, and I don't want to get fined, I don't want my insurance to go up, I don't want to get arrested. So there's there's a part of that also. It's not just infrastructure, it's also enforcement. So there's, I I will say, you know, there is some 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 truth in terms of some of these locations that where we will have some issues, but I would also agree, and I'll look, you know, firmly say that enforcement is, well, it changes behavior. Well, and now the last thing I'll ask then is that, do you, I and I'm I'm I feel I always get bad answers when I ask this question, but when you when you see the disparity in the way that we conduct our stops and searches, is it at all a concern for you? Or do you have any interest in looking into what other departments have done in other parts of the country that have had no reduction in the number of guns they've recovered on an annual basis, have no reduction in the number of drugs that they've recovered on an annual basis, but have done something to reduce the disparity in the way we are stopping and searching our drivers in their cities? Do you have any interest at all in addressing the disparity? Sir, we have very much the interest in trying to do that. Yes, we do. And unfortunately, as I stated last, uh we were at a conference last week. This is not just a Fayetteville issue. This is North Carolina nationwide. This is an issue. But one thing I would like for you to understand and our citizens to understand it, that when we target or that we stop a vehicle, that's a violation. It's not because of the race or the person that's in the car. It is the violation. It is the violation that we stop, and then we move.
I trust that 100%. Sir, but what I'm saying is that when you've seen other industries, right? You've seen schools that have shown that their rates of expulsion and suspension for black students is higher. When you see that hospitals, the maternal health outcomes for black babies is so much disparately more extreme for fatalities. We don't ask as a teacher or the doctor racist anymore. We just say that we need to stop these outcomes from happening. So please, let's move past, I guess, that first level of discussion. I don't care about proving that, you know, we're doing something discriminatory or racially biased. I'm saying the outcomes are obvious and are indisputable. What are we going to do about it now? And it does not require, doing something about it doesn't require proving that y'all are doing something racially biased, because the outcomes are that. So what are we going to do about it now? That's the real question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Benevente. Every time we get to this point, it goes back to the money. Okay? And so I think what would be helpful for me, because as we look at 25,000 stopped black drivers, 13,000 white drivers this year, right? How many are for things like whatever prompted to stop, tags out, insurance out, lights not working, registration didn't check out? Like, is there a category that captures that number? Because we all know, all the things that my colleague named.
Yes, sir.
Are rooted in economics, but nobody ever wants to get to the economic conversation, right? You had 10 minutes to preach. So we have to talk about the economics, right? And so it's easy for people who've never walked in this path to tell everybody what they need to do, and hadn't lived in neighborhoods where 18 shots are fired, and all those things. But do you have a way to extract out the basis of the call that showed whether this is a call based on lapsed insurance, this is a call based on expired tags, or this is a call based on something that we can contribute to the real problem?
Yes, sir. We can extrapolate all that information regarding the non-moving violations, regulatory violations, and moving violations, so.
Because that would be helpful, because that's in this total number. So even though you had it broken down on screens, you had the green and the red dots that, you had just as many green dots for non-moving violations as you did for the moving violations, right?
Yes, sir.
So I would like to see that in some future report.
Yes, sir. And currently, right now, we're, I'm talking with our team and IT to try to develop a more comprehensive way to show what you're all asking for in a manner that's a little bit more easier to read and a little bit more lively in terms of, because a lot of the data changes from day to day.
And I can assure you that as these cuts that are coming, that the county commission just had a special meeting for when more is being cut, that people are going to be faced between the choice of paying a bill or renewing insurance, or paying a bill and renewing tags. And so those kind of things contribute to it. The fact of the means is a part of it. So I welcome those discussions, but you got to talk about the real underlying problem. But I'll go to you, Councilman Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I want to go at a different angle, because you did not talk about the SROs and the TCOs too much. He did. What is our requirement? But I think our contract said we had to have so many by the end of January, I think it was?
Yes, we'll be having 18.
And we are currently at?
14, sir.
14?
Yes, sir.
And what is our capacity for our TCOs with Major Hunt? Are we at, I think you said 62?
It fluctuates daily, sir. Every day, we have folks, you know, it's a constant revolving window in terms of getting those TCOs. So I want to say it's about 65 vacancies that we, I mean, 65 positions, but it's constantly, I think we're at 62, you know, I think right now, 62 right now in terms of our TCOs.
And my second question is probably for Madam Attorney. Where are we with getting our red light camera program back in the lawsuit with Wilmington? Because I believe speeding is a habit, and we have to change that habit. Because if you know that there's a light at a certain corner, and you got a ticket there once before, you're not going to speed there again.
There's some litigation out of another jurisdiction still pending. Council, you know, you're welcome to reinstate it before that litigation is complete. You just are at risk of being sued as well.
Right, and we talked about that before. I wouldn't wait until this was over with before we tried to reinstate it.
No, thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, thank you, Chief. That was my two questions.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll continue.
Yeah, yeah. And just for a second time, we're going to let you continue, and then we'll catch the questions at the end.
And we're going to break down in terms of these, the vehicle stops, the others that you also see, the 2% kind of consistent from '24 to '25 as well. And then the breakdown in terms of the others and those percentages related to it. As you see, in 2025, those percentages are also increasing in terms of drugs and weapons as well. One of the topics that our team has been discussing in terms of transparency, one of the, you know, I think in the yearly report, we provide city council and the citizens here of Fayetteville the numbers. But I think that I want to be able to provide these numbers on a quarterly basis in terms of to alleviate some of the perceptions out there that we do not police our officers when they are engaged in activity or behavior or unprofessionalism. And so what I want to be able to do on these quarterlies is also to highlight what we do in terms of when we receive these complaints. And you'll see in terms of some of the citizens' complaints, you know, our complaints are down compared to 2024. We have more positive comments compared to 2024. And, you know, one of the things, too, that we want to also make sure that when we have our internal affairs doing their investigations, and they also will be giving what we have or our dispositions in terms of sustainments, exonerations, and other violations than the complaint that was originally received. And the next slide here will show you exactly in terms of what we're able to do. Of course, based on, you know, the limitations that we have on HR, but we just want to kind of give you when we do receive these complaints and what we're doing in terms of coaching, policy warnings, oral counseling, written reprimands, suspensions, demotions, and even dismissals. And a lot of these things even started before I actually arrived. Chief Braden, you know, he was very much involved in terms of making sure upholding policy and laws, and making sure that these bad actors in the department are held to the standard, and that they will be, you know, held, you know, to the law and make sure that they don't reflect badly on the rest of us that are out there trying to do the job in a professional manner every day. As you see here, this is our departmental staffing at this time. We're down about 14% with 60 vacancies. We're having, we have a group of numbers coming in right now. We're hoping to be by 30 January.
Oh, great.
Based on the numbers that are coming in. So we're, but like I said, I'm going to take some tips from Chief Dove and see what they did to get those folks. But just to give you an example, we can have 100 applicants. Out of that 100 applicants, we may qualify up to 50 that may make it through the first round of the backgrounds. Then out of that 50, we may end up with 25 that actually makes it to the academy. Out of that academy of 25, we're graduating about 12.
Oh, wow.
So that is a challenge.
You went from 100 to 12.
100 to 12. And that is a challenge. You know, we don't have, you know, an application pool of several hundred. We do not, you know? And that's been the challenge, you know, because we're always constantly, you know, and as you've seen in the other slides, as we dismissing folks as well, those are new vacancies that we have to make up for. So it's a constant, you know, battle that we're constantly doing, but we're pushing and pushing to make this number and be successful by the end of this fiscal year.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Chief, I didn't have a question until you brought this up. And we were at the graduation and of the, I can't remember how many was graduated, but three had master's degrees.
Yes, sir.
How did you get that pool?
So we have, believe it or not, we have a pool of folks that, well, matter of fact, one of those that have their masters is actually working on their PhD. You know, so we have highly educated and qualified individuals, you know, that are, you know, wanting to do, some of them, you know, have, went to school formally for accounting, and then they decide, no, I really want to be a cop. And, you know, they're coming here, and we'll take them. You know, we can utilize that skill set. And so we have that, that's happening all across the nation. You know, folks wanting to come in, make a complete change, you know, and also, some of it is economy. You know, you may have some individuals that may have had a career in a particular field, and next thing you know, that field is, you know, being utilized in terms of maybe AI's taking their job, and now instead of, or robots are taking their jobs. So now they're coming to looking for other career fields that are stable for them, for their family, with benefits, you know, health insurance and everything else. And so those are the people that we're targeting and hoping to keep throughout our whole time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, Mayor Proctor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Chief, I don't have a question. Thank you for your report. It was, it was great. It was very informative. The one point that I wanted to make is exactly what you just said. Everybody talks about how we are down officers, and what you just said, I wanted to really repeat, and I think that there's something that we need to get that out. You have 100 recruits that come to you, and 12 make it through. So a lot of people say, you know, just become a police officer. You are a complete professional, and I think that we need to make sure that we get that out, that people understand that you just don't sign up and be a police officer. It is, and the numbers that you're giving me, I would say the ratio is harder to become a police officer than it probably is to be an officer in the Army. Because when you have a ratio of 100 people, and 12 pass the test, pass the endurance to get out on the highway and protect us, I think that's something that needs to be really celebrated, and I don't think we're celebrating it enough. I do want to go back to Councilmember Thompson, what you said about you had people with master's degree, having children under the age of 30. I fully understand that, because you are exactly right. You are not only a professional, but you are getting benefits, and you are getting retirement. And I just think the way our society maybe has come, our culture has come, in the past 20 years, that we've always expected to have public safety. And now it is, it's more, it's almost a luxury. But you're doing a great job, and thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, Chief, you got a couple more with some community National Night Out, Coffee with the Cops, are you?
Yes, sir. This is our community engagements throughout this past quarter. As you see, the National Night Out that we had throughout the city, some of them, we had it on the day of, and then we had some that were postponed due to weather. Also, we had Coffee with the Cop events throughout the city, all throughout the city during this quarter, our Special Olympic events, and we continued having several events throughout this quarter as well. And I think we're going to take some tips from Chief Dove in terms of showing how many community engagement events that we do have, because we do have a significant amount that happens, and we, you know, we're always engaged with our community here. As you see, our promotional and graduation ceremony that took place most recently. And this is our core values, mission statement, and mission statement. And I will take any other questions that you have at this time.
All right. Councilmember Benevente.
I believe Councilmember McNair made the motion. I'll just second it and ask for a discussion.
All right. Councilmember McNair, I'll go to you to receive the report. Is that what you were eagerly waiting to do? All right, motion by Councilmember McNair to receive the report, seconded by Councilmember Benevente. All right, discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, another great job. This is going to be our last time getting to discuss the quarterly report. So, you know, I hope that, you know, you get some more critical questions in the future from the council, because I know that over the past three and a half, almost four years that I've been on council, I never often see anyone else on council asking questions to be critical of the report. And it's not a critical in the sense of being criticism, but iron sharpens iron. And I think it's important for y'all to get more perspective on the data that you're sharing from members of the community who have questions about the awesome power of government as it is exemplified through law enforcement. And I think that there's always going to be room and necessary space for these kinds of questions. But, you know, none of my concerns are coming from a place of disrespect for you or the work you do. I think about my father, who was a soldier, and me going to college and people saying nasty things about soldiers, right? Saying that, you know, they're killers and they're doing all these horrible things. And I was like, well, that's not what soldiers do. You can be critical of the government that sends them into situations that, you know, they need not be in, but, you know, supporting the troops doesn't necessarily mean supporting everything that the government sends them out to do. And so my criticism is never of the folks that are doing the hard work behind the badge. That's why I go out to all the graduations promotion ceremonies, because I want to inundate myself with the family experience and the pride that I see on everyone's faces, to make sure that my criticism is never personal, but it's coming from a place of, you know, I guess, necessary professional concern. But a bigger concern that I have, and this is where I really want to ask you, begging you honestly, as I think a chief of very high integrity, you know that this council and probably the council after this is going to very rubber stamp, thoughtlessly spend as much as you're going to ask for. It's going to be your responsibility to, I think, put some lines in the sand. You know, I remember a previous chief saying that, you know, the starting salary for a new officer shouldn't be over six figures, that there needs to be some grit and some tenacity built, and whether you're really meant for this job, it's not a get-rich-quick kind of job. But I bet you, if you asked the city council for an enormous amount of money for new officers, they would say yes, you know, ignoring sort of the secondary and third order harms that that comes from when you put quantity over quality. So that's just one example, sir, of the kinds of things that I think that you're going to have to sort of police yourself in, because we don't have a council that is going to put, I think, issues of equal justice, constitutional concerns, or fiscal responsibility.
Wrap it up, Councilmember.
Or fiscal responsibility ahead of these things, because they consider anything less than complete praise and worship to be anti-police, which it isn't. But that's who you've got to work with, so good luck.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Benevente. Thank you, Chief. Thank you that the citizens decide who sit up here.
Yes, sir.
And so when they speak, that's what it is. So thank you for that. All right. All right, council, look to you for your vote. Well, we got a vote on this. Receive the report.
Reun.
All right. All right. Unanimous motion to adjourn.
Yes, sir.
All right. Have a good evening.[1771.71]